And you gotta tell me, I think we're. Sorry, hold on, let's see.
We're live, Robin.
Yeah, we're totally live, sorry. Um, hi, everybody. Welcome to the Saratoga Podcast and sorry for our late start today. Totally my fault, not Dan's apologies.
A rarity that, uh, I didn't hold us up.
Yeah, it's never a good sign when I'm podcasting from my living room because that means I haven't been able to make it the three minutes up to my office. So, yeah, running a little late, but it's been a wild, busy 24 hours with, uh, City Hall politics, which I know we want to get right into. And we're missing Adam today. Adam is still, uh, overseas in Poland. He'll be back though, and we can't wait to be reunited, but Adam, we miss you. And in the meantime, Dan and I are here and Michelle Mattigan is going to be joining us shortly. And we are going to recap last night's city council meeting, which was a lot. It was a lot.
You were there in person, so you've got a better perspective than me. And, and, and also mentioned what we're gonna have a second guest on, right? Mike Brandy, the Republican chairman.
Because there's some breaking news you had mentioned to me. Um, yes, so we're gonna have some, there's some breaking news that we want to bring, uh, that we want to talk about as well. But before we do any of those things, I just want to address something because he is going to be one of the topics of conversation today, and that's Commissioner Dylan Moran. And last night I did go to the city council meeting and I made what was, you know, a bit of a critical comment to the council during public comment about how Commissioner Moran went about selecting his attorney that he's using to represent himself, uh, because the city was subpoenaed in the spring um, for records pertaining to the on-call pay scandal. And as we've mentioned in our previous podcasts, Commissioner Moran, uh, hired a New York City-based attorney who charges over a thousand dollars an hour, um, to represent, uh, their interests, um, in responding to this subpoena. And so basically the, the crux of my public comment was the process that I was put through as a former public official when I was served a subpoena by the Attorney General's Office. And how the city council at that time discussed it and, you know, put all these stipulations in place in terms of how they would pay it, when they would pay it, what amount of money they would pay. And, you know, it boiled down to they were gonna cap the spending at $10,000. And that in, in contrast to the lack of procedure that was followed and the lack of transparency, um, in, in terms of how this attorney for, uh, Commissioner Moran was hired, I just found to be incredibly hypocritical. And so I wanted to bring up the contrast in my public comment. Moving forward, as a result, I received some text messages from Commissioner Moran last night. Um, who accused us, Dan, you and I, in this podcast of doing several things. Um, one of which was, uh, perpetuating lies and defamatory content about him. Um, not having any journalistic standards, uh, so on and so forth. And so I just thought it was important for me to kind of bring this up because as you may recall, we were, we have had Commissioner Moran on this podcast on more than one occasion. Um, we have always enjoyed a very positive relationship with him, especially when he started his first term. Uh, we were very complimentary towards him. We thought he was doing really great work. Everything was kosher. Um, but over the last couple of months, when we've been a bit more critical of him at the city council table, his position towards this podcast seems to have changed fairly dramatically. And I just want to again clarify that I have always told Commissioner Moran that he is welcome to come on this podcast at any time. And, um, talk about, you know, whatever he would like to put out there. And if he feels that there are stories that are not factually correct, that are being discussed on this podcast or publicized on this podcast, then he is always welcome to come on and put his truth out there. Um, he's declined to do so at this time, which I think is a mistake, but you know, that's certainly his right. Uh, he also, you know, accused us of kind of having a coordinated communication strategy when we put these podcasts together.
We don't have anything coordinated.
And so that's what I, that's what I was gonna say. I was gonna say, Dan, how do we prepare for these podcasts?
Well, we, we fly by the seat of our pants usually.
We usually have about a five-minute text thread that says, are we podcasting tomorrow? Yes or no? And then do we have any guests coming on? And that is truly the extent of it. There is no preparation, there's no, you know, conspiratorial plans to like criticize someone or focus on a certain something. It's, it's all very, um, fly by the seat of our pants. And really, we're always just responding to what's happening in the news.
Right, right. That drives us.
Yeah, and we try really hard to inform people. And then also we offer our personal opinions. And I think it's pretty clear when we are talking about, you know, when we're recapping something. And then when we go into our thoughts and feelings about that. Um, so I regret that Commissioner Moran feels this way about the podcast and I again, just hope that at some point he changes his mind, decides to come on because I think communicating to the public through whatever platform you can is always a good thing as an official.
A- a- and a quick aside, Robin, I don't think we've ever had any guest on this podcast that didn't feel that they were treated fairly. Look at Jim Montanino. We were criticizing him. I, I was mocking him at times. We put him on and he seemed a little trepidatious about coming on. At the end of that, and you and him got along and you and him ha- had, had history that was somewhat negative, but you and him were, were solid on here. You treated him very respectfully. By the end of it, he, he was smiling year to year. He's like, wow, they, they didn't attack me.
We've never, we've never had a guest complain after they've come on this podcast, ever.
Yeah, we've had Mayor Kim on this podcast. We've criticized him before. Uh, we, we do our best, we do our best. And there may become a time where we do have a guest on where we call BS or we get into their face a little bit. Um, uh, I, you know, I, I reserve that right if they're up their line or was or feeding us BS or whatever. Um, but I, I, I don't think we've treated anyone unfairly at all.
Yes, I, I agree. And I don't know what I don't know. And so I can't just advocate for Commissioner Moran when I don't know what his truth is or what his side of the story is or what he's dealing with. And, um, a lot of that kind of, uh, was illustrated again last night. So I made this public comment. I, I illustrated the difference of how these two attorneys were acquired, dah, dah, dah. After I made the public comment, um, Commissioner Moran spoke on this issue and then it turned into a very, very long discussion that we'll get into. Uh, but one of the first things Commissioner Moran said was that when he went to hire this attorney, he sought out the opinion of our city attorney, Dave Harper, who said, yes, go ahead and hire this New York City-based attorney and gave him approval to go ahead and hire the attorney. And so even just knowing that fact, I was like, oh, that does change my feelings about how this happened. And, you know, if I were Commissioner Moran and I asked the city attorney, can I hire this attorney? And the city attorney said, yes, I, I would have gone ahead and hired them. So, you know, just not like, just not knowing those things, um, makes, makes it difficult to have a full picture of what's going on. And, uh, anyway.
I, I, I had another source tell me that there was some pre-attorney approval. So that, that may get Commissioner Moran off the hook, so to speak, but doesn't get the city off the hook, right? We, we, the city as a whole. And we're still spending $1,250, at least at times. The issue got confusing last night with Dylan talking about two different attorneys, 500. I don't know if those.
Do something in the background, like knocking around?
It's my dog who won't leave my side, who's eating a bone. Let me see if I can go on mute here and do something about this.
He's a little bit, much as I love your dog, he's a touch noisy at the moment. Oh, we don't want you to, well, now we can't.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll talk and I'll, I'll pet him when I'm talking and, you know. Yeah, this, Robin, this is our well-coordinated podcast where we cover every, every square inch of things ahead of time.
We go over pet policies, children policies. Yeah. Um, so last night, uh, the city council meeting was lightly attended. Um, there were about six or seven public comments. Uh, one was about short-term rentals and, or one or two were about short-term rentals. And then the other four maybe were, um, about, uh, the, these legal bills, uh, that were being proposed on the agenda, uh, to be covered, to be paid by the city council last night. Um, okay, Dan, I can't see you now and I'm feeling, feeling a little lonely, but I will push through and hopefully you will rejoin. Um, so the bulk of the city council meeting last night focused on whether or not they were going to vote to pay, or you're back. Oh, good.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to take care of this issue in our well-coordinated podcast.
Right, right. So I was just saying, actually, there was a, uh, there was an update on short-term rentals. Um, from Commissioner Moran, but I may have Supervisor Madigan, who's gonna come on in a minute, talk about that because I think she understood it a bit better than I did. Um, but the bulk of last night's meeting
Uh, I can interrupt you for a second. A quick question. Did he say when he's gonna release the revised proposal for sure? Right? Cause that's still not out there, correct?
So, again, I need Commissioner, uh, Supervisor Madigan to kind of talk about this a little bit more because the conversation was focused more around what the state was going to do and then how that would affect what we do. And then there was some debate over whether or not the state would pass these regulations. And i- it was a little confusing for me to follow at least. Um, but the one thing I did, my one takeaway was that he did, Commissioner Moran did say that the fee, the fees, the fee structure would be like dramatically lowered if this happened in conjunction with the state legislation. Like he was like, oh, for like a primary residence, it would be like a $50 per, uh, fee to get your, to get your permit. Um, so that was a good thing.
Let me, let me comment quickly on that. Parts of this have leaked out, you know, Commissioner Rand has hinted at things, other people have hinted at where this might be going. And I reserve the right to look at the actual document and make my assessment then. Well, let me just say the parts that have leaked out and the part Commissioner Moran has shared, it sounds like they're striving for reasonableness. And I know that may not please everybody because there's clear sides in this. But it seems like there was some reasonableness going on there. Again, I reserve the right to look at the final document and, 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 and qualify that. But, uh, you know, good, good, good for him. Commissioner Moran's, uh, 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 taking some, some heat lately. A lot of it perhaps well, well deserved, but, but he is a talented guy.
Okay, well, he apparently is talented in his primary career, which he mentioned last night a few times. Um, that he does very well in his career and makes a lot of money. So like kudos to him on his other job. Um, we did just have a comment from Gail LaSalle who says, is it the role of the city attorney to approve the hiring? Does that not need to be approved by the council? And this goes, Gail, to the heart of the issue. There is a process, I believe, that is in place for situations like this, when you're needing to hire outside legal counsel that I thought everyone had to follow before they hired outside legal counsel. And it wasn't just going to the city attorney and getting the city attorney's A-OK. But that seems to be at the heart of this, um, issue. And again, Commissioner Madigan, keep calling her Commissioner, former Commissioner Madigan, current Supervisor Madigan, is gonna be joining us in, in a moment to, um, discuss that kind of procedure and her thoughts on it. And she really does have such a wealth of institutional knowledge, having served, you know, for 10 years in City Hall as the Commissioner of Finance and can really speak to how, uh, these processes are supposed to go and how largely they're supposed to go through the budget process. Um, but it was always my understanding that when you were getting, you're hiring anybody, you had to get a request for proposals and you had to get at least three quotes from, in this case, it would be attorneys. You would get three different quotes from attorneys that had, you know, somewhat similar backgrounds or expertises. And then you could demonstrate that the person you were recommending the city hire, you know, wasn't charging something unreasonable. It was in line with other attorneys of the same ilk. Um, and you could just show that you'd done your due diligence to look around and that this, this firm or this attorney was really, you know, the right one to be hiring and you could, you could show all three bits.
But that seems like a very prudent process that was not followed. And, and this felt cloaked, right? What went on here? Not only didn't follow a process, but it felt, it felt, and I won't say definitively because I, because I don't know. But boy, uh, uh, from the optics test, uh, it looked very cloaked.
Well, so part of that was because there was no public discussion at the council table about it. But at the meantime, Commissioner Moran and, you know, the others who were responding to the subpoena were already incurring billable hours. So by the time it was brought to the public's attention, there's already been a $60,000 legal bill that's been incurred and needs to be paid. And it's like, wait, what? You know, like we didn't even know an attorney had been hired. And then when you hear the attorney is from the city because according to Commissioner Moran, this is so steeped in politics, this, uh, subpoena from the DA's office. It's so steeped in politics that he had to look outside of the capital region to find representation that would be able to adequately respond to the subpoena. Which I personally call bullshit on because I received a subpoena from the Attorney General's Office, which you talk about steeped in politics. And I was able to find a extremely competent, fantastic local attorney, Mike McDermott, who charges $375 an hour or something thereabouts, which is basically kind of the market rate for attorneys in this area. Um, versus, you know, an $1,100 an hour rate, uh, which Commissioner Moran's attorney.
He is an incredibly respected attorney in the Capitol District.
Mike McDermott, yeah, he's fantastic. Supervisor Madigan just joined us, so let's bring her in, okay? Hello Supervisor, how are you?
Hi, how are you? I was just finishing up putting my name in. Sorry, I didn't realize I was not quite in.
No problem. Thank you so much for joining us because we have lots of questions based on the very long and, uh, confusing discussion that was had at the city council last night that basically like broke my brain personally. Um, and it all centered around, it was a tough one. And it really all centered around uh, the hiring of an attorney by Commissioner Moran and the, uh, bill that was incurred by that attorney and the lack of procedure, um, that came before that hire was made. And so having been the Commissioner of Finance for a decade in City Hall, you have so much institutional knowledge and I would love it if you could speak to our viewers about is, is there a process in place? How, how would you have handled this or how should it have been handled?
Well, I, I believe there is a process in place and that's where I think the conversation began to devolve and just kind of get circular around this notion of reasonableness. Um, and who's to define reasonableness? And who's to say this council of five people are going to be able to come to the same idea of what reasonableness is? Um, so one thing that was missing from the conversation last night was any notice or any discussion of what the city budget is or how our city procurement process works. So, um, excuse me, my dog is acting a little crazy. Come on up here.
Everyone's done.
I know. So, um, you know, there's, there's a whole section in the charter on budget preparation and budget administration. And, uh, yes, I know that the city council set up an appropriation largely because, Robin, of the, uh, AG case that both you and former May Kelly were going through. And so I guess they feel that this appropriation, this assignment is their appropriation, right? But there's nothing about assignments at the, at the, at the state comptroller's level and there is nothing about assignments, um, in the city charter. Uh, I think they're to be used rarely. I do believe that this council has taken it upon themselves to set up many, 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 many assignments. And I think they think that that's okay. So, you know, that's, 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 you know, and, and they do work, they can. I've used them minimally, mostly for police officers, remember, because we'd have like a census of 80. But maybe we could only hire 72, so I didn't want to have in the budget, you know, uh, salaries and benefits for, you know, eight police officers.
But so can I ask a question about that? So if, so say Commissioner Song B, they have this assignment, so this money put aside and a special assignment to cover unexpected legal bills.
Yeah.
But does that mean that they can just access that money at any time without having the council approve the hiring of whatever the outside council maybe?
Exactly. So we have a procurement process, right? And that clearly sits in the city accounts department. And especially when you're talking about this amount of money um, and potentially now an ongoing investigation or who knows what, right? Remember, it's only an investigation. I compare it to, um, something like, um, a FOIL request from the district attorney's office. I, I don't know, you know, it's an investigation. They're looking for some emails and you know, interaction between certain staff members at City Hall. Uh, beyond that, I haven't seen much. Um, if there's a subpoena out there, because I heard that bantered about last night too. Or somebody's, you know, I, I, I just haven't heard that, right? I, I mean, have you heard that officially?
I think just the city was subpoenaed and they were just seeking specific documents between uh, a commissioner and some employees, but no one was.
But nobody's been criminally charged at this point?
No, nothing like that, no.
Just, it's a basic investigation, really just looking for some emails and interaction between, um, some council members. So, you know, the city charter, the Commissioner of Finance, Finance section is very clear. You know, it actually says, any authorization of payment or incurring of obligation, you know, without it, without already having some kind of, um, appropriation is completely in violation of the provisions of the city charter and shall be void. So, you know, I feel as though this council hasn't really covered themselves well enough. Um, I also feel like they've diminished the power of the budget, right? The, the whole idea is get three quotes. Um, typically we want to use the, the lowest quote, right? This is part of the procurement process. If for some reason somebody came by, back with something that might be a little bit of a higher quote, but you feel the service might be better to you or your department, then come and make that case to the council. Be very open and transparent about it. Um, understand what the, uh, city taxpayers are going to be required, uh, whether it's by per hour or with a, a cap. And then vote on it. Like that's how you move forward on these things.
Right.
That's the procurement process. And then you make sure the money is in the budget, that it's been actually appropriated. Sitting outside of the budget is not an appropriation. And so that's what I really, like, there's a process. There's a, this is why this hasn't happened before. We have a process.
This is obvious. Can I interject? Can you guys hear me? I'm, I'm having all sorts. A- a- and this is an obvious question, but I just want to clarify. This is a written process, right? And, and it's clearly, anyone can find it, anyone can follow it, people are expected to follow it, right?
We have a purchasing manual, we have a finance manual. Um, these are updated regularly at city council meetings throughout the year. Typically, we like to do it once a year. Uh, the accounts department brings the purchasing manual. It's there for all council members to review. They should be reading it. I mean, they are on the city council. They should understand the charter inside out. They should understand their purchasing manual inside out. They should understand the city charter inside out. They should understand the comprehensive plan inside out. There are certain documents you need to understand to be representing your city or your county or your state or your country. And so I, I just was surprised by the lack of conversation about procurement and budget and appropriations and the proper way to go about doing it. And it got really caught up in this notion of what is reasonable.
Yeah, so the reasonable factor was, is this, is this, uh, invoice and basically how much was being charged? Like re- reasonable? Was it reasonable to expect the council to approve it? And they really got into the weeds talking about what was reasonable. And I will say Commissioner Golub was as aggressive as I've ever seen him at the city council table. Um, I understand that he is also obviously an attorney. And so I'm sure it's frustrating for him to hear legal issues being discussed by people who aren't attorneys. But I'm not sure that fully excuses how aggressive he was specifically with the mayor. Um, but I also want to talk about one thing.
He was borderline bullying, Robin. I just gotta say that. He was borderline bullying at least at one point with the mayor, I thought.
We have had plenty of lawyers on the city council. You don't have to be a lawyer to be on the city council. And, you know, I think the only opinions that really matter, although we want legal opinions and that's fine to, to ask for them, um, are the people that vote. And they have the right to vote the way they want to vote. And once the vote's been cast, you don't, you should not be attacking their vote. Um, you should be listening for the reasons for why they want to vote a certain way. Like, that's just proper decorum all around on that city council. Um, and I, I think we need to have more of that, you know? Um, and if somebody doesn't want to discuss their reason for how they're gonna vote, they don't have to, right?
Well, I.
I mean, we prefer a discussion, but if somebody has decided, you know, I'm gonna vote no and here, and, and I want to tell you why, great. But if they don't want to tell you why, that's fine too. Maybe that doesn't look so great to the public. But, you know, you don't have the right to, I don't think. I think it's very, you don't want to shut down another commissioner or the mayor, right? That's, that's a tricky thing to get into.
Well, all, all five are equal.
Disparage whatever their opinion may be as to why they're going to vote a certain way.
Right. Cause I think the, the thing that was not Commissioner Golub's greatest moment was that he told the mayor that the mayor's opinion really didn't matter to them at all. And he only wanted to hear from the city attorney. And at the end of the day, all five people on the city council are equal. They have equal votes. And everyone's opinion should be respected and heard. But that being said, we were lucky enough to have Vince Villanartis as the state.
He was great.
He would come to the microphone all the time to explain the legal issues, to answer any legal questions we had in a way that was, you could totally understand. Like he put it into normal cool words. He wouldn't use like lawyer speak. And I just found him to be such a tremendous resource. Last night, for the first time that I can remember, Dave Harper, who was the term city attorney, was at the meeting. And I think that some of the responsibility for this conflict has to be placed on him. Because he, it was extremely difficult for me to make sense of anything he was saying. But also it appeared that in conversations he'd had with individual council members, he'd given them, he'd given one, one impression and the other, another impression. And in some, it didn't give anyone definitive opinions or answers, like yes or no answers.
Yeah.
And I just, that made everything so much more challenging.
One of the things I think they are suffering from is they need a full-time city attorney. I mean, we were very lucky to, yes, I think Vince was great. I also had the opportunity to serve with a councillor Dorsey under Scott Johnson. He was also a fantastic city attorney. Um, and, uh, I, I just have to say that we had the benefit of a full-time city attorney who could really immerse themselves in this and then some, you know, full-time. I want to say Vince put 60, 70 hours a week into that job. Um, and so he was always very well-prepared. I do think it would serve the city well to have a full-time city attorney.
I also just have to point out the irony though, that it was just one or two city council meetings ago where the city's labor attorney had an opinion. And half the city council was like, we don't give a shit about that guy's opinion. We only care about what we think. This legal opinion is bullshit. We need to seek another one. Whereas last night, it was like, okay, we only care about what the city attorney thinks. And I'm like, this is.
As, as, as veterans of the city council, I'm gonna ask both of you. Um, they kind of blindsided Dave Harper with, come up here and answer detailed questions. I, I guess that's happened before, but was, was, was that fair to him? Is that, is that nature of the beast?
I think it's fair, uh, but I think tone matters and I, I think it turned into a little bit more of a, uh, a debate between lawyers and not a debate between maybe a commissioner and a lawyer. Um, you know, I've served with plenty of lawyers on the city council too and you know, it's a specialized kind of law, which is why I do think, uh, you know, having a full-time city attorney who can really immerse themselves in all the various city issues that might come up, because they vary from department to department, would really benefit the city council. Um, I can't say that Dave Harper, who is probably gracious enough to accept this position as well as have to be in private practice, right? Is fully versed on all of these issues that might come up, right? I mean, they take time. You gotta research them. You really gotta look into them. He probably should have been asked to reach out to the comptroller and the AG in advance. Um, who knows? I am sure the comptroller has some guidelines as to reasonableness. So I did notice Commissioner Cole um, wanting to table the vote so that they could actually make that request. And I think that that was a perfectly reasonable thing to ask for, uh, because there was so much confusion at the table last night. And I don't think you're gonna get those five individuals to come to any sort of an agreement on what reasonable is. The other thing that I picked, picked up is, I mean, I think we, but most of the public right now or people who are following this story would say that this is an unreasonable amount of money to spend. Um, you're talking, it's not our money. It's not the city's council's money. It is the taxpayers' money. And that's how you always have to look at it. So I really do think in this instance, three quotes, yes. I think, you know, anyone on the city council deserves, uh, good representation. Um, and, but you can find that not at a rate of $1,250 an hour. And so go through the procurement process and use the power of the budget to be transparent about what you're doing. That's the process and you won't have this conversation devolving into what is reasonableness.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with so much of what you just said. I also have to get your opinion on whether or not you think this is so hyper-political that it forced Commissioner Moran to look outside of the capital region to find adequate representation.
I think he can find adequate representation within this large region. We have excellent law firms, some of which are New York City law firms that have an office up here that keep their rates lower because they know they're not, you know, working in the city, paying city rents, paying whatever city commercial. You know, there's all sorts of other fees that are going into using, um, councillors from New York City. Yes, I, I, that's my personal opinion. Um, you know, uh, if I were Commissioner of Finance, I really would have assisted, insisted on the procurement process on, on an appropriation, on some transparency. Sure, he has the right to some representation. I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm still a little confused because this is just at the investigation stage.
Right.
Are we making a bigger issue of this, uh, than it needs to be? This may have gone nowhere, right? I mean, it may have gone nowhere, right? The district attorney, the. The district attorney, the New York State trooper that's assigned with this investigation, in the, in the end, may have said, okay, there's nothing here, you know? So we're moving on. But I don't think we're at that stage now. Now we're into a whole other, you know, like I said, I read you off a section of the charter. I think that this payment could be deemed void. The city council could easily go back and fix this through a procurement process and an appropriation in the budget and make it all legal. The notion that this conversation had, happened last night with no discussion of procurement, no discussion of budget and appropriation, which was just, like, stunning to me. It was just all about what's reasonable. So we have to pay the bill, you know, so.
So now, two things about that. One, this $60,000 was spent over a six-week time period, okay? I responded to the AG subpoena over the course of almost two years.
Yeah.
I turned over 35, over 35,000 pages of documents. I went through a lengthy deposition. My total legal bill was just over $15,000. And so I think the concern here is that if this does develop into something more, this $60,000 number is going to just skyrocket. And that's not something we really can handle in our budget. And I think that would be an undue burden on taxpayers to continue at this kind of, at this rate that's being charged.
Well, I do agree with that. I'm not trying to be disparaging right now to any council member, but this is not a reasonable rate.
Right.
And frankly, I would be embarrassed to bring something like that. But that's just me, you know? I, I just would be, you know? And again, I'm not trying to be disparaging, but I can't quite figure out where the council is at, and is it, they didn't, they didn't decide on what was reasonable last night. So that, does this mean we are now using this law firm, again, without a real appropriation in the budget? And are we continuing to rack up $1,250 an hour legal fees? I, I just don't know.
I, I wrote-
To me, we are, but-
I wrote yesterday in Search of Report, I said, it, it's not unreasonable to assume this will sniff, this will get close to six figures if, if, if this investigation continues, a new round of questioning, for instance, this could be close to six figures, if not over six.
Well, let's say it goes beyond an investigation. Yes, absolutely. And I think this is going to turn into, I don't know, the potential to turn into yet another legal issue for the city.
Well, so, and so, and on that subject, there were two things. Commissioner Cole wanted to table this so we could get the comptroller and the attorney general's opinion.
I thought that was a great idea.
I thought that was a good idea, too. In response, Commissioner Moran said if this bill wasn't approved last night, the attorney would quit.
Okay.
Which I, I found, I, I mean, I, I found that to be, if that's true, I, I find that to be unreasonable.
That'd be a terrible attorney. He could possibly be subject to ethics violations.
Well, I, I agree. I also think, you know, come on, negotiate with this attorney. We've negotiated with other vendors and attorneys before. We're a small city with a small budget, you know? That operates on a grand scale. Negotiate better. Go back with the bill, scrutinize it.
Let me say something.
Yeah.
I, I personally know his attorney. I haven't told anybody this before. I don't own well, but we served on a, the Spitzer Transition Committee 15, 18 years ago.
Yeah.
I think highly of him. Both his ethics, he's brilliant. And he, I, I just don't believe he would violate attorney ethics and, and do that to his client. My God, if, if this, if this bill is another three weeks late, I'm going to, come on, that's, that's-
Yeah, that, that did sound a little surprising to me, too. I'll be honest with you. I would think there was something, you know, my lawyer's going to quit. But, I mean, I think it's time that he works with this lawyer and transitions to a new firm at a more reasonable rate. What's reasonable? I think we all know what's reasonable. Are we going to now, are we putting a dollar amount in city code to define reasonable? And then are we just always going to spend, what, $500 an hour now on, 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 on legal services? There's something that's not making sense to me.
Well, to me, it's so obvious. Our procurement process that you described is very simple, and getting three quotes tells you what the market will bear in terms of a price, and that's what's reasonable. That's it.
Three quotes, three quotes that include a detailed outline of services, okay? Because granted, you're moving pretty quickly, right? You, you're hit with, I guess they were hit with a subpoena, and it's an investigation, and maybe they felt they needed legal services. It's pretty, people want to work for the city of Saratoga Springs, let me tell you.
They do.
Right? So you could get three very competitive quotes, especially if you know you're going out to a quote process with detailed, you know, line items of what the services are going to be that are being offered. And maybe you don't like the one that has the lowest quote, but you like the one with the medium quote. So you come to the council, you explain what's going on, you get your appropriation, or you get your cap, and then if you have to come back, come back, you know?
Commissioner Moran.
I mean, but the, the process exists to protect the taxpayers.
Commissioner Moran also did say last night, though, that if this wasn't approved last night, he was going to consider suing the city.
Unfortunate language. Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's like- I don't think taxpayers want to hear that. You know what I mean? Or voters. Personally. I'm going to sue the city.
I feel like we're back in kind of like the Mayor Kim, like, hell days, where everything just became legal on top of legal. I'm going to sue you, I'm going to sue you, if you do that, I'm going to sue you. And like, it just reeks of dysfunction, and, and I don't think it's healthy or good for the city or the city council members. I don't think this is how things should be discussed with, like, by, you know, legally, by legal flacks. It's just, it's, it's crazy.
I know. It's like, there's some things you should try to temper, especially when you're sitting there at the table and, you know, kind of all eyes are on you.
Yeah.
It does happen, you know, it does happen. We say things that we wish we shouldn't have said, but seems to happen a little more often than not. But, you know, just, does the city need to pay their bills? Yes, the city needs to pay their bills. We're a great city, we pay our bills, we should be happy to pay our bills. As Commissioner of Finance, I liked paying our bills on time, and I liked making sure that we were paying our bills because that all plays into your boundary. If you are a city that has a habit of not paying your bills, because that came up a lot, but this bill's not that late, the lawyer's not going to quit. However, we are in a situation of, are we still using this law firm because we haven't defined reasonableness? What has happened to our procurement process? Are we in a situation now that city council members just get to pick and choose whoever they want to work with? Because, I, I, I mean, I can't tell. Are we doing RFPs? Are we getting bids? Are we following our procurement process?
What about young city employees? Can they just go out and find their own attorneys?
We have a couple. Well, first of all, I, personally, me, I would have been so freaked out incurring a $60,000 legal bill, not knowing if it was going to be covered by the city or not. Like, that to me is like a terrifying prospect. I, 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 there's no way I could personally cover it. And so it's just being that irresponsible and spending the money before you have the approval is like ass-backwards.
I think it's one of the reasons it's just not allowed. And, you know, this is part of transparency. You do not go out and incur something against the city budget. It's a violation. It, it can void the payment. It's right there in the city charter. It's right there. That alone, what they did last night, could void it. Now, granted, they had their three votes, but, you know, what is an assignment? An assignment is not a real thing. A reserve is a real thing. They should be used judiciously, these things called assignments. And, you know, I don't know, they seem to have a lot of them.
So essentially, what happened was that there were three votes on this. It's just, the technicalities required three votes. And Commissioner Songby, Commissioner Golub, and Commissioner Moran all voted yes. Mayor Safford and Commissioner Cole voted no. I found it very strange that Commissioner Moran was voting on this in general, because I, 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 I mean, first of all, he's, the accounts department is in charge of these procurement processes. And so he, I feel like, should have stepped back from this vote, because I feel like the conflict of interest, I mean, he's voting on his own, his own bill. Seems like there's a bit of a conflict of interest there. But that is how it, that is how it passed. But I'm hoping that doesn't just, like, shut the door on this. It, it does seem like there is an extraordinarily important and urgent need to figure out what the process is and whatever they have to do. Put new legislation, new city code together, new language together.
Do it fast. Call us, terrestrial city council meeting, because, Dan, as you just said, this has the potential to really balloon.
Yeah.
Because there was no indication last night, because nothing was defined, that we were not continuing at this hourly rate.
We have a couple comments here, just wanted to throw up. One is from Deana Drake, and she says, it appears the day of the in-person meeting was May 22nd. Traveling to New York City to save the city money doesn't make sense when that meeting was a $10,000 meeting based on billing, if I'm reading that correctly. That is a lot of money. Gail says, didn't Phil and vote no on another presentation of a bill because they hadn't followed the proper procurement process? Yes, as I recall, yes.
Commissioner Cole's bill, yes.
And then Deana also said, yes. So that's, that was the cost of a one meeting, which is, so again, that cost of one meeting was almost the cost of my entire year and a half on representing with the AG. Like, this is, this is-
I'm not laughing. I think, I think, you know-
That you took a lot of grief, that you took a lot of grief over.
No shit.
One, one thing I, you know, Commissioner Frank, when he ran for office, his tagline was, it's, it's, it's your money. It's your money. And that's how we always need to think of it. It is not our money, as, we are the custodians, we are the keepers, we are the people that try to make sure, especially in accounts and finance, that procedures or the administrative units, that the procedures are followed accordingly. And I just didn't really see that last night, and I guess it's because this assignment exists, Robin, because, you know, the AG did an investigation and they didn't know where your legal bills were going. Because, yes, there was a lot of nonsense at the table about your legal bills and former Meg Kelly.
Yes.
So the hypocrisy is hard to deal with.
Commissioner Moran.
I will admit that. I will admit that, that, that that's difficult to deal with, especially when you were transparent about it.
Yeah.
The fact that this is a criminal investigation potentially makes us very different as far as defense.
Yes, it does.
It goes, and I'm sure Mike Brandy will have something to say about that.
Yes.
I think he knows a little bit about that.
So I really just wanted to come on and just say that I believe the city has the process, and when it's followed, we don't devolve into sort of these circular twisting ourselves into a pretzel conversations that took place last night. I, you know, I tried to actually message that to the city council, too, because it became very frustrating to hear, you know, no conversation about procurement or the budget. So I'll leave it at that.
Supervisor Madigan, we thank you so much for joining us. Thank you for giving all of your insight and knowledge on this. It has been very helpful.
Yes.
And I hope we can have you back on soon.
Yeah.
Great. I'd love to come on and talk about my campaign for, running for Saratoga County Treasurer at some point with the group.
Let, and, and before you go, let me say, Supervisor, and I also want to call you Commissioner, there's times when I like you and there's times when I don't like you. But I love the fact that you are, you are on here and you're not giving the company line, you're not waffling, you're not saying, possibly, you're saying, you're calling it as you see it. Good for you.
She knows her shit.
You know, running a city is not easy, you know? But we're a great city, and you got to run it, and you got to make decisions, and you got to be transparent about it. And that's, that's my take on running a city, running a county, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, thank you, ma'am. We will have you back soon.
Okay, thank you.
Bye. Um, so I want to bring in our next guest, because, Dan, there is some breaking news as far as, as from what you told me.
Yes. We'll bring in Mike Brandy, the chairman of the Saratoga Springs Republican Committee. And this morning, and I don't want to steal too much of his thunder here, but I want to maybe tee it up for him, he filed a lawsuit this morning, which is pretty impressive just based on timing and everything. Mike, I'm going to leave it to you to, this, this has broken, you, you did put out a press release, I shared on Search of Report, other media have it as well, so it's not completely hidden, but, but I still, for, for people on here, maybe it's the first time they're hearing this, could you tell what you filed this morning?
Certainly. So, yeah, it was a, it was a late night, it gave me flashbacks to being a young associate, you know, we're burning the midnight oil to get some last-minute papers filed. So it was a late night last night, you know, getting some research done and putting some papers together, but we were able to file this morning about 10 o'clock. What we filed is, there was an Article 78, which is basically a general proceeding that you can use to challenge a municipal act. And so we did that filing, and we're asking the court to step in and maintain the status quo. Stop any payments until the court can look at this and say, was this done right? Is this a permissible payment that we can make? And again, just maybe, you know, a few hours of research, we found a, a number of issues. And a number of those issues we were aware of prior to the meeting, and I actually prepared a solid three-page legal memo that I sent to all the council members, their deputies, and the city attorneys, which detailed some serious concerns over whether this was constitutional to make this payment. And perhaps unsurprisingly, no one seemed to read it or mention it at the meeting, as they all got bogged down in reasonability, which is really the last step in the analysis.
So, let me ask you a question. You, you, you're, you're the one, it's in your name that you're filing, because you're an attorney.
Yes, I'm the designer.
Your name, right? Okay. Robin, go ahead.
So, could you talk, I mean, could you give us any specificity in terms of some of the issues that you are seeing with how this kind of played out?
Sure. The, the fundamental issue here is that New York State Constitution makes it illegal to make a gift of public funds. And the reason that comes into play here is that municipality can only use its money pursuant to a legal purpose, or has a legal obligation to do something. So there's a lot of Attorney General's Office opinions on these things, because very frequently a municipal attorney looks at this, has a request for indemnity, and says, oh crap, this is confusing, let me get some help from the Attorney General's Office or the comptroller. So they'll send a request to the Attorney General, and the Attorney General's Office will issue an opinion. Here's the answer, right, they'll lay it right out for them. And there's one case, it was, it was very similar to this, where employees were seeking assistance with interviews and investigation, what have you, and the Attorney General's Office was very clear that they're not entitled to a defense, and that paying defense in that case would violate the New York State Constitution. So that's first and foremost the challenge here. You know, we have a subpoena that was directed to the city and seeking certain city records relating to certain employees. So no employee received a subpoena, no employee was required to produce anything, and no employee was required by the subpoena to be interviewed. So it really meshes pretty well with that Attorney General's Office opinion.
So Supervisor Madigan kind of likened it to basically a FOIL request, in, in some ways, in, in terms of kind of what the subpoena was asking, which was just for records. Because I just think it's, I think it's, when you say subpoena, you know, it brings up like a whole host of ideas, like people, you know, you don't really know what it specifically means. But in this instance, all it was, was a request for documents, correct?
Correct. And you see, at the top, it says subpoena deuces TICOM. I probably not pronounced that right, but that's a Latin, for, essentially, that's a, that's a subpoena for documents, for records, not for testimony.
My question is, was he interviewed, or was the deputy commissioner interviewed? I, I guess we don't know that, right? Even though the subpoena didn't say that, they theoretically could have volunteered to be interviewed. Even though the subpoena didn't say that, they theoretically could have volunteered to be interviewed. I highly doubt an attorney would allow that. A good attorney would allow that, right? I'm sorry?
Go, go ahead. Sorry. I said they could have voluntarily done it, not pursuant to subpoena, but the Attorney General's Office opinion that I, I sent to the council and that I, I referenced in the litigation. The specific request was these employees wanted representation to sit with them for interviews. And Attorney General's Office said, no dice, that doesn't get paid.
And presumably, wouldn't we know if they've been interviewed because we would look at the $60,000 legal bill and interview prep? Or the time that they spent with their clients while they were being interviewed would be documented on that?
I would assume so.
If those documents are current, if those bills are current, right? There could be another pending bill out there, but that, that's a very valid point on your part, Robin. Uh, let me ask you about the, the fact that this is a criminal investigation as opposed to a civil action. Uh, there's a distinction with that, correct? You've, you've done some.
A huge distinction, Dan. Uh, so civil indemnity i- is different from, from criminal defense. Um, with a criminal matter, and a lot of it arises from whether you're in the scope of your employment. If you're a municipal employee or municipal officer and you do something in the scope of your employment, you're generally going to get indemnity, whether through the state law or through a local enactment, uh, like we have in section nine dash one. So i- i- in those civil instances, you're, you're gonna generally be indemnified. Criminally, there's no analogous state requirement for municipalities to indemnify people for criminal defense. Uh, towns and cities and municipal municipalities can do it, but they're not required to. Now, where it gets sketchy is if you are convicted of a, of a criminal act or you plead to a criminal act. Per se, under the law, that is not in your scope of duty. There's no universe where a criminal act is within your scope of employment. So the way the state handles this and the way the Attorney General's Office recommends that municipalities handle this, that if you want to provide a criminal defense for your employees and officers. Because you, you can reimburse them after the fact. If there's an acquittal or dismissal, you can pay for their fees at that point. The issue is that if you pay it up to that point and then they're convicted, well, all those payments violate the constitution because those are outside the scope of employment. So you left up the situation. What do you do? I mean, how do you claw that back? How do you rectify what's now been rendered an unconstitutional payment? And it's really an impossible situation for the state or municipalities to be in. And that's why it's not recommended. That's why this kind of thing is not done. Because h- how do we get this back? If it turns out that Moran is charged and convicted with something, how is the city gonna get the 60 grand back? I have no idea.
Right. Uh, um, another question I have for you is, um. Out of my head, uh, um, so quickly.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah. It, it seems, again, I'm not an attorney, but on its face and with everything I know now. I don't understand why our two city attorneys couldn't have responded to this on their own and provided the documents.
It's, yeah. Um, and, and they did. Uh, it's my understanding that the city did respond to the subpoena. The subpoena due date was May 15th. And it's, I see no indication that the, uh, DA's offices is going after them for contempt for not responding. So I believe they respond. The city received the subpoena and the city responded this to the subpoena. So all this extra representation is really extraneous. There's really nothing that they're doing. They don't have any standing in relation to the subpoena. They don't have any obligations in relation to the subpoena. And to that point, um, a lot of what Moran, you know, if the subpoena was responded to by the due date on May 15th. Tens of thousands of dollars billed by Moran's attorneys were incurred after the fact. So there's not even a pending subpoena out there. And there's still these actions being taken. And it, it looks to me, I mean, I don't want to presume because the bills are fairly vague, but there's. References about talking to other witnesses and things. And it looks like it's, it's the start of a, of a, of a defense, like someone's building a defense versus responding to a subpoena. And the law is very clear. You don't get paid for a defense unless there's something to defend against. And there's no action here at this point. So no indemnity, no defense.
But let me ask you about the temporary restraining order that you filed for. Obviously, if Commissioner Sung Vee, uh, paid this at nine o'clock this morning or, or whatever. Um, your lawsuit, it would be tough to get, uh, not impossible, but it'd be tough to get money back if, if the law firm cashed a check and spent the money, right? So you have a temporary restraining order as part of your filing to ask the judge to stop payment. Is that correct?
Correct. And basically what we're doing with the temporary restraining order is asking the judge to preserve the status quo, right? Uh, because it, it's irreparable harm to the taxpayer if we write the $60,000 check. And we can't get it back or we have to sue Dylan Moran to get it back or sue his attorney. It, that's a mess, right? That, that, that creates an absolute mess. So we've asked the judge to hold the line, maintain the status quo. And frankly, uh, the, the city's already waited to be, this was originally on two weeks ago. And so clearly there's not a, a rush here. There's no indication that interest is accruing. There's no indication that, you know, Moran's gonna get dropped. I mean, you know, I heard you guys mentioned earlier, he mentioned that his attorneys stopped work. And Dan, I think you picked up on this, that that would be an egregious violation. Of the, the, the code of ethics for attorneys. You can't stop work for your client because you haven't gotten paid. You know, there's a, there's a whole separate procedure for that. Um, so if that's the case, that's really concerning. I don't think we should be paying this, this firm if that's the case, because they're, they're breaking the rules. Um, so I don't see any damage to the city, any irreparable harm where they need to pay this now and they can't wait a, a week or two. To resolve this and make sure that it's constitutional or if it's not to, to figure it out.
If my memory on obtaining a temporary restraining order is you have to show likelihood of success. Is that correct? Or has my memory served me that it's not just.
I think you're right. Yeah, right. Irreparable harm, likelihood of success on the merits. Um, I, I think those are the two, the two standards. And, and I think we have shown likelihood of success on the merits. I think flatly, you know, there's section nine dash one is two requirements. There's got to be an action. And there's got to be an allegation. We don't have an action and we don't have any allegations at this point. So without both of those requirements, there's no indemnity. So right there, there's no obligation to make the payment. It, it's over. We make further arguments that weren't, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I, no, continue. Sorry. Finish your answer. Sorry.
We, we also argued that Moran had an impermissible conflict of interest here. And I think he really exposed this himself. He, he referenced, um, that if this doesn't pass. He's gonna sue the city in Article 78. So right there, I mean, there's your conflict. I- if you're, you know, i- i- if you're going to sue the city if this doesn't pass because you have a, a personal interest in it. A personal financial interest. Well, right there, that's, that's prohibited under, uh, General Municipal Law 18 and Chapter 13 of the city code. Um, so that alone. And then he said something about, um, how he makes a lot of money, but his life is gonna be, he's not gonna let his life be ruined. By, by this action. So right there, he's talking about his personal financial interest in getting this defense. So both of those instances we include in the lawsuit are glaring examples that there was a conflict of interest here. He should have not just abstained, but recused himself from the discussion and the vote. Uh, instead, he was the prime mover here, him and, and, um, Jason Gold, Manita said her share as well, but you know, he was the, the prime mover behind this motion.
Um, is there any, this is my, cause I'm the only non-lawyer in the group now, so this might be a stupid question, but is the lawsuit that you just filed. Could that prompt Commissioner Moran to file some kind of lawsuit against you? Like, is this just gonna, is this gonna be like a, a flurry of lawsuits now?
Unfortunately, a- a- as, as the government, I've been on that side of representing municipalities. You just cut, sometimes just gotta sit there and take it. And Article 78 is built to allow citizens to challenge, um, acts of their governments. General Municipal Law 51 specifically allows taxpayers to challenge, um, expenditures for waste. So if you're the government, this is America, this is a democracy, you have that burden. And just like with foil and transparency. Sorry, it's coming out. Like the, the, the public's got some advantage here. So, so no, there's really nothing, um, that I don't, I don't see any exposure to myself over filing an Article 78 here.
And, and you touched on it. You don't think standing is gonna be an issue either, right? Because you're a citizen and it's your taxpayer dollars and so forth.
Correct. Yeah, of course. With Article 78, you always look at standing and it, there's, there's common law taxpayer standing. And there's also taxpayer standing under General Municipal Law 51, which, which creates that taxpayer cause of action.
Cause I've, I've had actions before that I've been involved with and we, we didn't get to the merits. We lost on standing and it didn't make sense. So, uh, so the, this is gonna be interesting. The city's gonna have to defend this, right? They've been served already, I take it?
Uh, we are still waiting on the order to show cause to be signed by the judge, which will direct service. Uh, we have put the city on notice. We've given them the index number so they have the documents and, and they know this is out there. I think the, uh, Democratic Committee just posted about it. I, I gotta, gotta chuckle out of that.
So I have to say, in this whole situation makes me very sad, right? Because I, this is not how I want our city to be functioning. I don't like lawsuits. I don't think they're good for taxpayers. I don't think they're good for anybody. We want to be focusing on the business of the city. And, you know, true public service and this all distracts from that. And so I think it sucks in general. But that being said, I have to say, I miss, you are the chair of the Republican Party. And I personally miss the Republican Party that used to be minding the money because nationally, I don't believe we have that anymore. And so I appreciate that you're taking this step to mind the taxpayers' money and make sure it's not being spent in a wasteful. Or potentially a legal manner. So, um, and so I, I, I appreciate it. I, I do.
Sure. I, I, I appreciate your, your words there. And I do, you know, this isn't something to take lightly. I mean, anytime you're going to court, i- it takes time, it takes money, it takes resources. And a- a- as an attorney, I mean, I, I live around litigation. It's not, you know, as, as intimidating or scary to me, but it is a, it is a big deal. And, um, you know, certainly not, not something we take lightly. And I did everything I could to avoid this. Prior to the last meeting, when this was on in, um, in June, I sent a letter to the council and I said, wave the red flag. This is an issue. You guys have issues with this. No one addressed it. Before this meeting, same letter, again, a different version, no one addressed it. So you know what? What am I gonna do? I tried.
They, I think they seem to have, some of the city council members just seem to have a very, uh, complex, uh, relationship with taking attorney advice or legal advice in general. Um, they really pick and choose when to invoke it or when to ignore it. And, uh, that's.
Kind of weird. There's a little bit of a, attorney worship going on, uh, I think at times. I think it's very easy and probably very tempting. To say, oh, the attorney said it, that, that's it. I'm done. All of these things, the letters I sent, you do not need to be an attorney to read the law. Laws are generally written in fairly, a lot of these are written in fairly plain language. Some of the concepts get complex. But reasonability is not a complex standard. Reasonability is a legislative determination. You know, they're elected to make that determination. So we don't need delineated standards for every single thing these people are gonna do. You know, they have discretion as legislators and, and, and sometimes it's gonna be difficult. And so no one's gonna write you an opinion that's gonna give you the easy answer. Um, and, and, you know, it's unfortunate. I mean, I do think the city attorney's office, you know, needs to do their job a little more. Um, you know, it sounded like last night, their recommendation was to go to the comptroller. But it was like pulling teeth to get them to, to say that and acknowledge it. And it, 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 I think created a lot of confusion on the part of the council.
I suppose going to outside counsel, because you can get it quicker. It, the, the outside counsel is not, you know, presumably not affected by politics. Um, get our own attorney to come up with an objective, fact-based, law-based answer and then follow it, right? It's, it's, it's a two-part process. You gotta obtain it and follow it. And that might cost us, I don't know, two grand, three grand, whatever. It's pennies on the dollar compared to what we're looking at paying. And this is, this issue does not go away. This issue keeps coming up. Uh, it's, it's just gonna be a constant issue. Let's settle it the right way, rather than the political way.
And I just want to reiterate Supervisor Madigan's, who just commented again, she wants to reiterate and make clear that there are policies and procedures that make this simple and fair. Also, you, Mike, have expressed and our city attorney expressed that the comptroller and the AG will give opinions on this for guidance. So that we don't end up doing the wrong thing. And so I don't know why we wouldn't have sought those out before taking a vote. And, you know, Commissioner Moran pressuring everyone to do it last night because, you know, allegedly the lawyer was gonna walk. I mean, this all is, this all just seems ass backwards to me. Just all, I mean, that's my legal terminology. It seems ass backwards.
And sometimes it's the most effective way to communicate. So what Michelle's touching on there is essentially, and it is a point we raised in the, in the litigation as well, is, um, you, you have certain requirements as a municipality to. Spend money responsibly, make sure you're getting a good deal. And, uh. Retention of attorney services is governed by 104B of the General Municipal Law, which basically says you gotta, you gotta adopt procedures and you gotta follow them. And, uh, we alleged that the city didn't follow them here. This was, uh, you know, Moran alleged that he spoke to some people that refused to, to accept, um, the representation. You know, the, the time will tell if that's true or not. Um, but the bottom line is that the proceed, the, the process is built to avoid this sort of thing. Um, and I don't think the process was filed here. So we raised that as well.
His law firm are in the habit of refusing business. No, we don't want your money.
Yeah, right.
All this conversation about legal bills just makes me want to kill myself that I'm not an attorney in billable hours. I want, I'm a great talker. I could rack a billable hours like nobody's business. Man, different career choices should have been made.
Yeah, right.
Anyway, Mike, we really appreciate you coming on and, um, you know, explaining this to us and explaining your actions. And please keep us posted. We will keep our viewers posted on how this continues to transpire and play out. But in the meantime, I hope you were able to relax and have a wonderful Fourth of July and turn off.
Last thing staying between me and a nice afternoon nap. Like I said, a, a four or five hours of sleep from last night up early to get this thing done and filed, but, uh, always feels good to get it filed and off to court.
I, I can imagine. I can imagine. Well, thank you so much for joining us. We really appreciate it.
Of course, guys. Anytime. Have a good, have a good fourth.
Thank you. You too. Bye-bye. Dan, the man. My computer's about to die. And I know you said you had to be off by one and it's 1:12.
Yes.
Um.
No jeers, no jeers.
No cheers, no cheers. Um, there was a lot of, we just covered a lot in that conversation and I hope our viewers were able to follow because I know there's some complexities around this issue. That if you haven't been following it, might be confusing, but, um, it's a important one. It really dominated the entire meeting last night. Nothing really of significance that I can recall, um, although I was a little brain dead after listening to the conversation about the legal bills. I'm happy except for the fact that for this entire meeting, the background to this entire meeting. Was Saratoga BLM and the Capitol District DSA having a massive rally on the steps of city hall screaming and shouting. So all of a sudden you're like, I was like, what am I hearing? And then I was like, oh my. So that was just another kind of like. Element that I wanted to bring up, um, that the Capitol District DSA, which is the Democratic Socialists of America. Decided to hold an event for Saratoga BLM to say like, you know, hands off BLM, stop harassing BLM. And so they had a rally and a march and it was just, uh.
Completely outside?
Was that, it was.
Completely outside?
Yes, they did not come in the building, um, at all. They were just outside and, um, very, to their credit, very loud. You could hear it really clearly in the council room. Um, but, uh, it just was, you know, one of those very Saratoga Springs, this is our, this is our, uh, city government moment. Um, a lot, a lot of things going on all at once. But, uh, we will keep everyone posted on how this, uh, plays out and hopefully it will play out in the best interest of Saratogians. And we can get back to, you know, day-to-day business and getting the things done that people really place a priority on here. Um, and stop with, stop with the, the legal maneuvering and bullshit, you know?
Yeah. Um, Robin, we talked about this briefly. We may not be on next week, folks. There's no city council meeting. If there's crazy breaking news, we may join, but the.
Yes.
By my way, we're, we're not gonna be on next week.
Correct. For the summer, we may be going to, I was gonna talk about this with you and Adam, but since we, in our, in all of our planning. Um, we may be going to every other week perhaps, just to do city council recaps until we get back into the fall. Um, I know Dan is super busy during the summers with all the coverage you do with racing, et cetera. Uh, I've got four kids who are home, which makes me woo, little, little busy, busy. So, um. We will let you all know what the schedule's gonna be, but. If there's, if breaking news happens, if there's important stuff that comes up, we will make sure to get on it and, and podcast and get it out to our viewers.
Excellent. Cool. Folks, thanks for.
And you can follow us on all the social media channels, subscribe on YouTube. You'll get a notification when we go live. Or you can watch it after the fact on any of your favorite podcast platforms, Apple, Spotify, blah, 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 you name it, we're there. Thank you, Dan. You rock. I'll see you soon, sir.
Thanks, Robin. Take care, folks.
Bye.